Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting of the 23rd of November 2023. And we're here in One Nicholas Street and the time is 1pm. I call attendance and we have all councillors in attendance. Good afternoon to you all. And obviously have quite a few visitors in the public gallery as well, so welcome to you all as well. I'll now move on to an acknowledgement of country. I ask councillor Kunsman to do the acknowledgement of country. That's after that. The leave of absence is after that. If I could ask you to do an acknowledgement of country?
Yep. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of a proud people.
Thank you councillor Kunsman. For the opening prayer this morning, we're very lucky to have Pastor John with us here. If I like to call him up and come to the lecting? Thank you. Might I ask you to say your name and which church you're from and anything you'd like to add before going?
Yes, my name's John Meath. I'm the Past Division Christian Family out there at North Bevel. And I did want to just pass on from our congregation, the appreciation to the city council on the, in regard to the provision of the community events grants, which have enabled us to host our annual Free Family Fund Day over the past several years. And this is a completely free community event, enjoyed by as many as 900 people. And it would prove very difficult for our little church to fund this without the generous support of the council. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you Pastor John.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this gathering today. It is your expressed desire that we would always pray for those who exercise governance in whatever community we may find ourselves a part of. And in such prayer, we pray for the individuals concerned in civic decision-making, especially our councillors here today, but also for the city council staff who assist and help carry out this governance. We make no pretense that community decision-making is easy, for it is not. Therefore, we humbly ask for your enabling wisdom, your grace and guidance upon each of our elected members today in their deliberations. We extend a blessing to our community as a whole, knowing full well that many people in our city struggle to meet the demands of daily life. May the work of this council overflow into a tangible blessing upon each and every person who calls Ipswich their home. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor John. Thank you very much for all the work that your church do in our community. Thank you. I now move on to apologies. I have no apologies, but I do have a request for a leave of absence from councillor Kunsman.
Thank you mayor. I seek leave of absence for the Ordinary Council meeting of the 7th of December.
Thank you. I'll second that. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Everyone's in favour? No, that councillor Kunsman didn't vote on that. Thank you. I have item five, condolences. There are none. Six, tributes. There are none. Seven are presentations of petitions. And I have here a petition entitled Ipswich Pool Entry Price Rises for Pensioners. So I'll move that the petition be received and refer to the appropriate council department for investigation and a report back to the relevant committee. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Any discussion?
If I could, mayor, through you, just thank the Division Two councillors for taking courage of the petition as it came through to council. I know that some of the petitioners did send an email to all of us and we did. But yeah, thank you to the Division Two councillors for taking courage of it. And I just want to acknowledge that some of the petitioners arrived this morning thinking that our meeting started at 9am. So just wanted to, on behalf of us here this afternoon, apologise for that miscommunication as well.
Thank you. Councillor Johnny?
Thank you mayor. Just wanted to reiterate that we will be taking this on board and will be communicating with the petitioners as well as soon as we've received the recommendations from the officers and understand their frustrations and apologise that we weren't there this morning in person. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Johnny. Well, thank you councillor Johnny. Thank you councillor Tully for supporting residents, you know, to access, you know, things like petitions so people can, you know, have their say in how council manages and runs services. Thank you. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item eight, which is presentations and deputations, and there are none. Item nine, public participation, there is none. So we move on to item 10, which is the matters of public interest. So does anyone have any declarations of interest and matters on the agenda?
I'll declare an interest, mayor, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act. I, councillor Fechner, inform the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item number 15.6 entitled CBD redevelopment committee report. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in A1A Events Proprietary Limited and Bahazenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is considered and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fechner. Councillor Madsen?
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Jacob Madsen, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6 titled Report of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is, I was a former member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and they're building the Ipswich Trades Hall is adjacent to council CBD redevelopment works. As a result of that, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you councillor Madsen. Are there any other declarations of interest? No, thank you very much for that. Item 12, we have the confirmation of minutes. So 12.1 is the confirmation of the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting. Does anyone have any questions of council officers? No, in that case, I'll move that the minutes for the Ordinary Council meeting held on the 26th of October 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. Any errors, omissions, corrections? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. 12.2 is the confirmation of the minutes of the special meeting. I'll move that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 9th of November 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. Any errors, omissions, corrections? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 13 is, may I remind you, there is none. We now move on to item 14.1, which is the response, the notice of motion for foster dog fee exemption. Now councillor Doyle, you moved for this. Do you wish to move this matter? So you'd like to move that? Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. I'll hand over to yourself councillor Doyle as the mover.
Thank you mayor. Just confirming that I am moving A through to C.
Yes.
And just like to add that I tabled this notice of motion in, you know, response to difficult economic environment for all residents across Ipswich and undoubtedly all across Australia. And any offer of assistance we can give to our residents at this difficult time. And that includes, you know, giving them the capacity to take in foster animals with no financial burden in doing so.
Thank you. Deputy mayor, do you wish to speak to it? No? Anyone else? Yes councillor?
Um, thank you mayor. I'm just looking at the, that the foster carers who may exceed the permitted number of animals for their property land size. We don't put a number on how many extras. I mean, it could be overrun. I'm just wondering if we need to limit how many foster animals are going to be on a property.
Do you wish to ask a council officer a question or?
I can ask a council officer if they would like to put a number on it.
And the relevant council officer will be able to speak to this. We've had discussions about it, so.
Thank you. Please state your name and your job title.
My name's Hayden Taylor and I'm the Animal Management and Biosecurity Manager.
Thank you. I think councillor, you had a question?
Mr Taylor, I just want to know, are you going to put a number on the permitted number of animals on these properties? Because we know that cats, are the cats going to be not able to, you know, promote more animals? So I'm just a bit worried that we've left that open.
At this stage, there's two types of permits. There's up to four and then above four or five plus. We're currently not proposing to, to limit the type of permits that these foster carers can apply for. So they may be able to, in some cases, apply for more than five plus animals. What the recommendation C is proposing to do is establish a system to then put forward back to council when the fees and charges are developed, where we would look at reducing the fees for certain permit applications where foster dogs are involved. So if council did want to limit the number of cats, there could be a reduction in the three to four dog or cat permit and no reduction to five plus dog or cat.
So what is going to happen if the next door neighbour starts to complain about the noise and, you know, they're not cleaning up their yard? What are we doing then?
We manage those nuisances, I guess, as they come up with the current permit system now. So we'll target the specific nuisance that's arisen and what's the best way to remedy that? Be it foster dogs or someone's domestic pets. We would essentially target the nuisances in the first instance and try and remedy that nuisance working with the animal owner. And if we couldn't do that, we would look at the appropriateness of that permit continuing on, which is what we do now with, with animals of all kinds.
My only concern is that for barking dogs, they've got to do pages and pages of how often the dog barks and everything else. So, and how are they going to know which dog it is that's barking if you've got five or more dogs? So I can just see some issues coming up with this one.
Yes, it is, it is a complex process, barking. And ultimately, in the, in the framework that's being proposed, we would manage it in the same way that we're proposing to manage someone's pet, which would involve the person complaining about the dog having to go through a process of confirming that there is a nuisance and us then providing the, the animal's owner or the keeper an opportunity to remedy it. And that process may go on for weeks or months, depending on the nuisance. So that is a, I guess, a genuine possibility. The only way to, to get around that in, in the context of these recommendations is that we look at recommendation A and B and potentially we can revisit C either in a subsequent report or have it taken away altogether.
Mr Taylor, would it be fair to say that this report is talking about the permit fees for foster dogs? And any nuisance complaints is just a standard process for any county? It doesn't matter whether the foster, if there's been a waiver or a discounted in the fee? That there's no difference. It doesn't matter whether it's?
That's correct. Yes, we deploy our local law in exactly the same way. The issue being worked out through this report is the, the registration fee primarily through A and B and then how we deal with cases where they're over the number of allowable animals. And we're proposing to come back to you with a system where we reduce the permit fee in those instances.
I thank you for that. Councillor?
Yeah, I was just going to do as you did and just clarify the purpose of my notice of motion was not about increasing the number of animals or dogs that somebody may have. It was purely about the fee, waiving the fee. And obviously there's very different considerations in relation to numbers of dogs and it certainly wasn't my intention.
Are there any other questions of Mr Taylor?
Um, yeah, just, in any case, the permit is required if they want to exceed, you know, the, the number of dogs that they're allowed to have. So all of them will be permitted and in that instance, council is able to kind of control and have a better understanding of the situation in those particular instances as well.
That's correct, yes. So anyone under 2000 metres squared, it can only keep as of right two dogs or cats. And anyone who has over 2000 metres squared can keep up to four dogs or cats. And the keeping of foster dogs would count towards those total numbers, which I guess, noting that there's possible, it's possible people to go over, we've included recommendation C.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Mr Taylor? Thank you. From my perspective, anything that council can do to help ease the cost of living pressures, I think we should certainly investigate. Particularly when the benefits of these changes do assist people who are volunteering their time, their money and love to care for an animal in need. And animal foster carers are required to provide a temporary home for a range of reasons, including people recovering from post-surgery, time out of a shelter environment or if the shelter reaches capacity. Kittens and puppies are waiting to, to reach de-sexing age and pets that need extra training. So look, fostering volunteering is a wonderful way to be involved in the community. And these changes, while not adding a greater financial burden on council, will make a lot of difference to the people who are actually making a positive impact on our community. So I'll be supporting this. Any other discussion? Or councillor Doyle is the mover. Do you wish to write a reply or something?
Um, no, just would like to take the opportunity to thank council staff in responding so quickly and, and so thoroughly. And I'm delighted that we, through this, will potentially come in line with what other councils are already offering. And just want to reiterate, it's about the, the fee waiver.
Yes.
You know, the, the financial incentive for residents to foster. And certainly not about increasing the number of dogs that may be held on a property.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to the reception and consideration of committee reports. And the first one is 15.1, the Report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee. Does anyone have any questions of relevant council officers or anything on that paper? In that case, I will move 15.1. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. In speaking to this, I just want to highlight one of the matters, which is the Hotel and Short Term Accommodation Action Plan. I moved in July for a Hotel and Short Term Accommodation Action Plan to be produced so we could see how council could play a part in addressing the significant unsupply of short term accommodation in Ipswich. And it was received in the November GIW committee meeting. The plan is a great first step in looking how we can attract investment and support the growth demands of our thriving city. The plan outlines five planning levers and incentives that could drive investment and development of our new short term accommodation in Ipswich, including reducing infrastructure charges, expedited development assessments, free pre-lodgement meetings, a single point of contact concierge service, as well as creating a hotel and short term accommodation prospectus. As I said at the GIW meeting, I'm pleased to say there was a lot of consultation undertaken with various industries and industry bodies, like the RAF base at Ambly, people in the health sector, property, the local chambers of commerce, as well as other local governments that have already completed work in this, in this vein. This plan ensures that we are putting ourselves in the best position possible to be able to create opportunities to bring construction forward and encourage investment in Ipswich, while also addressing the needs of our rapidly growing city. And I also think this will be particularly important not only to continue to boost our tourism and visitation numbers, but also to position ourselves to take full advantage of the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. I'll open up for other discussion on the GIW papers. There'd be no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll now move on to item 15.2, the Report of the Governance and Transparency Committee for the 9th of November 2023. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he'd like this report managed.
Thank you mayor. I'd like to alter the recommendation to that council adopt the report with the exception of item 10. And I'll speak to that once it's moved and seconded.
Thank you. Okay, so that's item been the procurement of the works. So it's a traffic management platform. Okay, thank you. So do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Ireland. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor Madsen?
So I'm happy to proceed with the recommendations that the committee made at its most recent meeting. The only item I've provided the exception for is item 10. The general manager of corporate services identified that they'd like a bit more flexibility in what's adopted. So there's some proposed wording that the meeting clerk already has. And if anybody has any questions, I'm sure the relevant manager would be happy to answer them as to why those changes are being requested.
Okay, so we're looking at accepting all matters except for 10. That's been seconded. Any other discussion on all matters except for 10? Yep. Yes councillor Tully?
Thanks mayor. I just want to speak in relation to item four and it might need an office to clarify it. That's the adoption of seven revised policies. The one in particular that I refer to is in relation to the dividing fence policy, the proposed policy. And there's a, something I just need to raise, the wording on page two of five of that proposed policy. And I've got it listed here as page 75 of 201. And this is in relation to applicants to council where we're an adjoining landowner in fee simple. It says, if the boundary, that's the boundary between the council land and the, the other applicants' private land, is burdened by trees or other natural aspects, then it is the applicant's requirement to remove or maintain. Now, that might work in a lot of cases, but I just raise a couple of situations. One is, you sometimes have a situation where a large tree, where 5% of it might be on the private owner's property and 95% on, say, council land. It sort of suggests that the landowner can just remove the whole tree. Or is required to maintain a tree where the majority of it is on, in this particular case, council land. I just think it's, I'd just like that to be clarified because you could find some very unusual situations where it's probably not exactly what we might want as the adjoining landowner. That, that the, the applicant could just simply remove a tree.
So I'm just looking at the, because that's that final paragraph on page 75. And I'll just go into the track change policy, which is, I think, page 69 of 201.
Yeah, I think so.
And I can see that that sentence hasn't been changed.
No, that's correct, but I still think it needs to be, seeing that we're adopting this as a, as a revised policy. I'd just like that clarified and councillors put their mind to this situation, whether or not it enunciates exactly what, all the circumstances that might arise.
Do you have a suggestion of what you think it should be or are you wanting to? Have you discussed this with a council officer in the lead up to this?
Yeah, that, that's one of the difficulties of, you know, seeking the wording on, on the run. It might be remedied by these words at the start of that sentence to say, unless otherwise determined, comma. Unless otherwise determined or agreed, that, that would probably point to the fact that it's not just one way or the other. But I, just, just for those two simple examples that I've highlighted.
I just conferred with the CEO. If, if that was added, unless otherwise determined or agreed, comma, if the boundary is burdened by, by trees, et cetera?
The CEO's looking for, looking for nods or shakes from, from the officers. Getting positive nods, yes, and a thumbs up and smiles. So yes, I think that will be fine. Thank you.
That would alert officers to the fact that, you know, there, there is that ability there to, you know, because we, we wouldn't want someone cutting down a whole tree that's 95% on council land.
Yep. Thank you chair. That would be fine.
So if that's okay, will we add that as a recommendation B onto that? Or actually, would it be recommendation C? I'll just check if you're happy with that, councillor. If you want to look at the screen?
Or, or agree afterwards, unless otherwise? Or agreed afterwards, unless otherwise determined or agreed.
Now, I'll just check with the mover. Councillor Madsen, are you okay with that? Yep, councillor Ireland, you're okay with that? Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on all matters except for 10? No? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now go into item 10, which is the procurement works, worksites traffic management platform. Now, did you have an amendment or something, councillor Madsen? So councillor Madsen has proposed the following variation to recommendation B as follows, deletion of the words being an initial term of five years with options for extension at the discretion of council as purchaser of initial two-by-one-year terms and inclusion of the following words in lieu, being a term of up to seven years as required. Okay. And that's what you'd like to move, councillor Madsen? Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any other discussion on that? I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I now move on to item 15.3, which is the Report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee of the 9th of November 2023. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to move that council adopt the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, number 10, of the 9th of November 2023.
Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion?
Just in speaking to some of the discussion that happened at committee last fortnight, we got to see the results for the annual report card for the Ipswich libraries. And again, we're high performing in the 90s there in terms of 90% and above satisfaction for the library services, which is a great outcome and often reflective of the feedback that we get as councillors as well. There was some discussion about the movement from last year. There was a slight percentage fall. So we were kind of thinking about, you know, what may have caused that slight difference between the years, year on year. And we spoke about some of the unacceptable behaviours that had been witnessed in the libraries in the past year and the need to train staff. And we just went through a few of those examples. And it was really great to hear from the library staff that they were, they had the agility to kind of do a little bit of retraining of their staff to ensure that they're empowered to take on those situations when it comes to dealing with difficult personalities that come into our libraries. You know, and upon having further conversations more broadly, I'm aware through the CEO that this is not an issue that's isolated to Ipswich local government area either and that lots of other local governments are facing the same when they're needing to increase the security at their libraries and their council-owned facilities as well. So it's something that we'll definitely keep an eye on, but a really great and strong result, above 90% satisfaction for the libraries. We also spoke about the Ipswich Advisory Council. And it was really heartening to see that the organisation has embraced them with open arms and genuinely consulted with them on some of the big decisions that we've been making over the course of the last six months as well.
Thank you, councillor Fett. Yeah, I think it's great that the Ipswich Advisory Council is being utilised for consultation in policies that we're coming for. That's been really great to see. Also, the custom experience call report. It's great to see the big leaps forward that are happening there, not just with the snaps and solve, but just really great to see how that has, how that is working through our organisation and how we're responding to residents and how those, the maturity scores have increased, I think nearly doubled from 33% to 63%. So it's, so well done. Thank you, CEO. It's great to see that from the organisation as well.
It'd probably be remiss if you'd allow Chair not to mention the 333-odd thousand that we handed out to community projects and events over the course of the last quarter as well. And it was very serendipitous this morning to hear from Pastor John about his appreciation of being able to access those monies to put on really important community events. We didn't collude outside for him to give us a pat on the back like that. But it's really lovely to have that positive feedback here and quite timely with the report coming to us as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. And now move on to item 15.4, which is the Report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee for the 9th of November 2023. And I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like this report managed.
Thank you, Chair. I move that council adopt the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, number 10 of 9th of November 2023.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? No. I don't think we've got the speakers that were planned for that coming in the next one due to the DA that we were looking at last time. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. I now move on to item 15.5, the Report of the Environment Sustainability Committee for the 9th of November 2023. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how he would like that managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that council adopt the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting, number 10 of 2023 on the 9th of November.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fechner. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's two officers' reports. Firstly, the status update on the implementation of the recommendations from the 2022 flood review. I'd like to, through the CEO, thank once again council officers for the comprehensive report detailing the current status of the recommendations from that report and the next steps forward as we move to definitely make the city of Ipswich far more resilient. The second officer's report was the City of Ipswich Enviro Plan Programme and Levy Progress Report, 2022 to 2023. The report was self-explanatory, but I do thank councillor Fechner for his amendment to the recommendation that council receive a briefing on the Enviro Plan Levy Funds at a workshop session no later than February 2024. So I think that's very important to, as the elected body, to manage those matters with regards to the Enviro Plan. The City of Ipswich, our residents, our ratepayers in particular, are very fond and love our Enviro Plan and want to see that it is managed the most appropriate way.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I concur with the emergency, the status update on the recommendation of the 2022 flood review. It's important that when we do a review, that things are followed on. And I do appreciate the substantial amount of work that's been underway in regards to that. Looking forward to the permanent flood camera network as well. But also just a thank you to the council officers for the concise reporting as well. It was great to see. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. 15.6. Thank you. 15.6 is the Report of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee of the 9th of November 2023. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how she would like that report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council adopts the report of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, number 11 of 2023, on the 9th of November.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Quinsman. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to highlight the Christmas programme specifically for Ipswich Central. I mean, we're rolling out citywide and it's all looking very amazing, but delighted for particularly our top-of-town businesses, small businesses, that'll be participating in the twinkle, the lights display. So top-of-town twinkle, it is called. So just another great initiative from the team here at council to support our small businesses as we revitalise Ipswich Central.
Wonderful.
And of course, the important and exciting things around new leases that we, you know, approve via committee. I can't talk about those. They're commercial and confidential.
I was going to say, are we allowed to say who it is yet?
No. But yeah, very exciting to see this particular brand come to Ipswich Central, never before seen. So look forward to it.
Thank you.
Getting the nod from the CEO.
Any other discussion? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor, apparently it is beginning to look a lot like Christmas.
Thank you, thank you for that insight, Deputy Mayor. And even more so from tomorrow night with the lighting of the tree and the bristle carols on the park, Christmas in the park. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We move on to item 16, which is officers' reports. The first is 16.1, the CEO Organisation Performance Report for October 2023. So I move that the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for the month of October 2023 be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion?
Just a question through you to the CEO. I really like that we include the current consultation matters in your report. I was thinking maybe we could add a further line item there to acknowledge the number of people who have given their feedback on the Shape Your Ipswich platform. Might give us a bit of greater visibility on if we need to kind of promote through other channels to try and drive that feedback through those official channels to us on some of these really important matters. I know through our office, we're constantly spooking it in our feedback back to residents and it does seem like quite a lot. So it would be nice to know and could probably help us informing views as to how we handle engagement moving forward, noting that I believe and you might be able to answer this question, there's been some appointments made in the engagement space to try and bed down our approach there moving forward. Seek your comments if you have any.
Thank you. Through the Chair, just to say, happy to look to include some of the numbers of people engaged through the various Shape Your Ipswich community engagement projects as they move through the process, through to, yeah, the phases of engagement being completed, such that we can include meaningful numbers there. And yeah, certainly we've had some turnover in that area, like, you know, many organisations. And we've made some really great recruits in that area. So yeah, getting back up to full speed with community engagement and have worked up a draft forward plan for community panels, for example, as an important mechanism for community engagement for the coming year. And we'll be working with the committee chairs in terms of the scheduling of those and the content of those. So yeah, look forward to continuing to focus on improvement in our community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO, through the Chair.
Actually, I think it'd be interesting to know the numbers of engagement, also the page views as well, to see how often people are looking as well. Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you for the report, CEO. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Item 16.2 is the Quarter One Annual Plan, 2023/2024 Quarterly Performance Report. And I move that the Quarter One Annual Report, 2023 to 2024 Quarterly Performance Report be received and noted. Do I have a queue for a second? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In speaking to this, and this is a really important report because it does show the performance and the service delivered for our organisation. And you can see quite clearly that council continues to provide a range of services and activities for Ipswich residents in a fiscally responsible and in a timely manner. Many of the programmes in the quarter support individuals and groups and provides a wide range of services for the wellbeing of the community. We are planning for sustainable development with the public feedback submissions now received for the draft planning scheme and LGIP. Council is now reviewing more than 500 of those submissions. We've received 420 development applications this quarter and have determined a further 469. We are providing and maintaining infrastructure such as local roads, bridges, public car parks, footpaths, sporting fields, parks, libraries and art galleries. Our capital programme for the 2023/2024 is on target for the projects listed in the three-year capital delivery programme. Council is delivering roads maintenance and drainage works at the rate of 84% of on-time delivery with 2,368 requests this quarter. We have produced and supported 121 events and exhibitions this quarter for council events alone. And we've had over 92,000 people attend, which shows we are putting on events that the people of Ipswich and our surroundings are really wanting to be involved in. Providing community services and development continues to be targeted to include libraries, home care services, swimming pools, playground and sporting ground facilities. And all the while, we have made ourselves easier to communicate with. There have been 2,764 face-to-face customer inquiries this quarter, as well as 7,643 customer online inquiries. And our call centre has taken 38,202 calls and received 24,721 emails. So quite an incredible workload. And that's just the last quarter. Council has run 45 cross-community meetings and have had 2,617 people attend council facilitated development workshops. Our work on protecting the environment includes implementation of initiatives outlined in the resource recovery strategy, and these are on track. Council completes maintenance on open space with an 84% on-time delivery and a 90% for natural areas. We continue to play a part in safeguarding public health with 483 vaccinations delivered through the school immunisations programme and a further 626 through community clinics. Council has also issued 111 infringements regarding animal management and 33 infringements regarding local law and regulatory compliance. Council also plays a part in attracting visitors that support our local businesses and boost our local economy. The wonderful volunteers from the Visitors Information Centre, who I know will also be helping us with our Christmas in Ipswich programme, they have welcomed 2,948 visitors this past quarter. It's very pleasing to see that most deliverables this quarter are on track with only one needing attention and none at risk. I'll open it for any other discussion. There's none. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 16.3, which is the Report on the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the 4th of October 2023. Any questions of council officers on this? No? In that case, I will move that the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the 4th of October 2023 be received. The contents noted and the recommendations contained therein be adopted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Quinsman. Any discussion? I just want to say that I actually observed the last one and I truly appreciate the work that the Audit and Risk Team does. And I note that councillor Doyle and councillor Quinsman sit on that committee. And I thank you for helping council fulfil its responsibilities in regard to accounting and reporting requirements of the Local Government Act. And it's great to see, I guess, the outcomes of our systemic and disciplined approach to evaluate and provide risk-based advice and insight. Really appreciate the findings from the Audit and Risk Management Committee. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to add that, and I know I probably do speak for councillor Quinsman when I say that we've benefited enormously for being part of this committee. And it's pleasing to see the results as we continue to head in the right direction, noting the comment from the Queensland Audit Office in relation to asset and asset management, that there's been improvement along the way. So like when I see comments like that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand, I think it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item sixteen point four, which is the Monthly Finance Performance Report. I don't, I have one question of the CFO, may I ask for the relit council officer or the GM? Or the GM?
Afternoon Mayor, councillors, Matt Smith, General Manager Corporate Services.
Thank you, and if you're not sure the answer, I'm happy to take it as on notice. I note that there's a total net result, October twenty twenty three is fifty one point eight million compared to the year to date budget of forty two point one million, leaving up a running deficit of sixteen point three million. Are you able to explain why and how you'll minimise any further escalation for the rest of the year?
Yeah, I guess, Mayor, that's an ongoing challenge for us in the current economic environment as well, particularly as we see, you know, cost pressures quite well publicised, already rolling into our, you know, analysing for our budget process for next year, it's a, it's a constant vigil, I think, for council officers working through, looking at the different contracts we have in place, how we can manage our employee expenses appropriately as we, as we work through, also looking at some of those other expenses for supporting of our workforce through contractors and consultants or the like, so it's something that we analyse fairly regularly on a monthly basis, quarterly, some fairly robust discussions as well to look through different areas where we might be able to either reduce some of our expenses or find some further revenue opportunities through different means to continue to ensure we can operate in surplus ongoing.
Thank you, Mr Smith, any other questions of Mr Smith? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll move that report on council's finance performance for the period ending thirty one, October twenty twenty three, submitted in accordance with section two O four of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve, be considered and noted by council. Do I have a second for that? Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Thank you. There are no notices of motion, and there are no questions on notice, so I'll close the meeting at one forty seven PM, thank you.